City Council Study Session for Monday, May 16th of the Lathir Village City Council. First up is going to be the discussion of the city budget fiscal year 2223.
Mayor and Council, I have put together a budget that is a very rough draft of a budget since the council has not had any budget hearings as of yet. I did figure out our millage rate of what the millage rate would be for the city. I have sent that on to Oakland County for their approval of my millage rate to make sure that is okay. We have, I'm still waiting on water rates. I just got those today. Well, actually this evening, I just received some information on water from the SACRA. Councilmember Miller sent those to me this evening. But on the budget, we are, I went through things. I've done the, what we budgeted last year, what we actually have spent since 331. Usually we do 228, but I went to 331 this year because we are a month later in our budget when it has to be approved. And then I estimated what we're spending this year. Those are only estimations. They're not exact. And then I projected the budget of what the 2223 budget would be. I know there's going to be a lot of changes made to this budget because it is, like I said, a work in progress until council puts their input into the budget. Our, let's see, where can I start at? So I did the millage rate. I'm looking at 24.1266 for the city millage rate. That would be the general operating millage of 17.5618. The street bond millage would be 3.9307. So, and last year, our millage rate was 24.4906. So we are going down from 24.4906 to 24.1266. We are in where we're doing a headly rollback still. So our budget, our millage rate for the city is going down. Thank you. General revenues and information there. The state shared revenue, I have to go out and get that from the site yet. They have not, the ones that were out there were estimated. So I'm hoping that they're going to have more accurate figures for me to get the state shared revenue into the budget. We have, I've had to estimate a lot of the personnel issues or personnel things like how much salary people are going to be making for these open positions. I've also had their fringes because I don't know if they're going to be a single person, if they're going to be a couple, or they're going to be a family. So I went with the higher of the budget to be a family so that it is there. But I can always back that down to whatever, but the positions are not filled and I do not know what they're going to be. So I went with the high end on all that.
And there's always budget amendments.
There's always budget amendments, yes. I've increased the, we have been having a lot of community center rentals. If you look at that, we're right now at-
Which page are you on?
Oh, I'm on page three.
Okay.
The community room rentals, they're, we're at 42,000 already for renting out the community room. So I've upped that to 55,000. That's a $40,000 increase from last budget. That could maybe be even be up more depending on what we come in with this year. So. We also have the unearned revenues which are related to the ARPA funds, which are 200,000. So in our other revenues, we're expecting 187,900 as an increase in our revenue.
But this community center rental, that's kind of going back to where it was?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, before the pandemic, yep.
Okay.
Expenditures, like I said, water and sewer. I don't have all the expenditures for water and sewer. So the general expenditures, there's an increase there of 781,155. But like I said, that is going to change. That's using the high numbers for personnel issues. It's also using high numbers on some other things that are probably going to be put down, knocked down. So. Major and local streets, there's still information there that I'm getting from the engineers on what streets we're doing, how much they're going to cost for the next fiscal year. So, but that is not completely done yet, and either is the water and sewer. Debt service is going to be what it is because that is, we are paying in debt service. We're paying for the road bonds. We're paying for the sewer debt that we had out there. We also have a building debt that we will be paying, and we have the capital improvement bond. So we do have four debts or four bonds that we pay for right now. The building bond that we're paying for was for the HVAC system and the lighting system. We have paid one of those off. We still have one more to go for about three years. I think we still have to pay on that. And that's interest free. So we're not paying any interest on that one at all.
Can you, can you repeat the last, the last debt? I was trying to write it down.
The last debt?
Yep. You did, building, sewer, roads.
And capital improvement, yeah, was the other. And then we had a sewer went out there from before-
Right.
-that we're still paying on. The Historical Society has asked for training of about $450. That has not been put in the budget as of yet.
Four hundred, oh, $450.
Yeah, $450 for, to go to historical district commission training. So, and then if we're not a member of that, they've also asked for us to have the membership. And I think the membership was 150, and then the other was for the training.
So is that 150 a year or, or is it just one-
I don't know. I would have to ask on that.
Okay.
It's just from her email, just said 150 for us to join and then the training-
Okay.
Of 300. So it came to 450. But that has not been put in the budget yet. If it is put in the budget, it'll be put in under general expenses, general services, which is on page five. It will be put in there and it will be put on a separate line item for them. So that's up to council if they want to have that in there.
But, and I do have a question. The Historical Society, is that considered, it would be considered a committee also?
It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a district, it's a committee that we have that you appoint members to.
There's a commission and a society.
So, the, this is open, my, my thing is this opens the door to other committees to ask for, paying for training and budget items for them too.
It would be kind of like the Planning Commission.
Okay.
It would be Parks and Rec, things like that.
But at this point, any, any group, any committee that's within Lathir can now come to us for-
If they're a city-
A city organization. So I'm just letting everyone know that at this point, you're setting precedents. That's what I'm saying.
Right, or council would be.
Setting, yes. So any organization that is a Lathir Village organization can ask for a line item.
Right. Because like we have the vegetable garden that is part of the city. The dog park is part of the city.
And are they getting funds break in?
They do have line items.
Okay.
And they are funded.
Wouldn't hold your question until we get to that, but I know where you're going. That's why I said that. So go ahead.
Okay. So that is, I put, this year, the staffing, I've talked to different cities, different townships and that, and looking at raises for, they're anywhere between 3% and 5% raises because of cost of living. And these are people that are doing their budgets right now. So I did put a 5% in. I, that's up to council what they want to give the staff for raises. But I just, I went with the high numbers because I always go high on everything and then bring it down.
So with the percentages, will we go?
It's up to you.
Person, not person by person, but-
Department by department.
Yeah, department by department, I guess, if that makes sense, or-
Usually it's not, it hasn't been done that way, or it hasn't been done person by person. It's usually all the administrative staff gets the same amount. Usually we get a, based on evaluation, you get, and then you get cost of living evaluation. Or you get cost of living no matter what, and then you get a percentage for your valuation. Usually your valuation, I think, is 1% and then your, was 2%, I think, last year for the cost of living.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions on the general services?
You, you said that the, the vegetable garden and the dog park has line items?
Yes, they-
Are they on in the general fund?
They are in the Parks and Rec budget, recreation budget. And those are, those were set up when Chris was here for Parks and Rec. Also, the following employment positions that I have estimated for salary and fringe benefits and that were the city administrator, the city clerk, the Parks and Recreation Coordinator, the deputy treasurer. Those are positions that are still open within the city.
Can you repeat the, the open positions again?
City administrator, city clerk, Parks and Rec Coordinator, and the deputy treasurer.
So that's four open positions right now.
Correct.
The, are these all out, right? Or no?
The only one that is not out at this time is, I think it's the Park and Rec Coordinator. But the deputy treasurer is out there, city administrator. You guys are going to be working with that. And then the city clerk has been out there.
Okay.
And what do we just, excuse me, what do we just fill? What position was open that we filled?
That was the DDA project manager.
Is that what Suzie was before she was this?
No, Suzie is the Economic Development Director. Economic, Community Economic Development Director and DDA Director is Suzie's. Then there's a DDA project manager that was Cory's position. They filled that position. The DDA didn't fill that position.
Backfilled Cory's position.
Yeah.
No new position was created.
Right, there was no new position created, and the DDA filled that position.
And do we fill the DDA budget? Or where does it be?
The DDA is their own board. They have their own budget. They will be presenting their budget when we do our budget here, but theirs is only to be received and filed. The council does not have control over the DDA budget.
I understand that. But who funds the DDA?
The businesses through the TIPA, through the TIPA plan.
So we collect the money?
They get TIPA money, yes.
TIPA?
TIPA, yep.
And is that going to be on there, like roughly what we collect for DDA money that gets redistributed to the DDA? Is that somehow?
That will be on their DDA budget, what their revenues are. That will be on the DDA budget. Plus also, the DDA budget, also, we have an agreement with the DDA budget that we're doing a cost sharing with the DDA budget. We have, there's a DDA agreement right now from 2021 to 2026, and it's the Lathir Village Downtown Development Cost Sharing Agreement with the city. They are sharing costs in the 696 Service Drive Maintenance, the Streetscaping, Technology and Software, Planning Consultant Fees, the Liability Insurance, and then the DDA CED Director, which is Suzie is a 90-10 split. So 90% DDA, 10% city administration. The Project Special Manager is a 90-10 split. The city administrator is a 10-90. So they're 10% DDA, 90% administrative. The treasurer, because I do the accounting and book work for them, I am a 10-90 split. So I'm a 10% for a DDA, 90% for city administrator. And then the Code Enforcement Officer is a 45-55% split. So the DDA is paying for some of our salaries too.
Okay. So the city doesn't give to the DDA, the DDA gives to the city.
Except the TIPA money that is collected comes to the city.
All money comes to the city, yes.
But it goes to the DDA.
Correct. But I'm just wondering, where does the TIPA money come from?
It comes from the businesses, which is the downtown, or is the Downtown Development Authority. That is Southfield Road, 11 Mile and 12 Mile on the businesses.
So it's out of the business taxes?
Correct.
Okay.
And then there's also another millage that they get, which used to be two mills, but because of the headly rollback is rolling back, that is a DDA special, just a special millage for the DDA. So that money all comes in when the taxes are paid, comes to the city. I distribute the money to the DDA. I distribute the money to the schools, to the county, just like I would anybody else. And then the city has their money. And at the end of settlement, then, any money that they, we settle on real property, we get a check from the county. They go back and they will collect our delinquent taxes for us, but we get made, we are made whole. So then I make the DDA whole too, and the city whole on the taxes and the money.
And how long have we had a DDA? I'm learning about it.
1998, '99.
So it's a relatively new organization.
Not really.
Well, '98, '99, that's over 20, that's 21 years.
I'm just saying, I've been here since '59. Right. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of these things.
Okay, so that's a new thing with cities, to do DDAs?
No, for the city of Lathir, it was 1998. Most cities have a DDA and it goes further back.
And there's other things. There's brownfields, DDAs, LF, I can't even think of the name of it right now. But there's different, there's different things. But right now, if the DDA was to change their district because they wanted to include these apartments and that, if they were to change that, the county, because we get a portion of the county money too for the DDA. The county has opted to give us their money for what we collect from the TIPA. In the DDA, the city gets that, or the DDA gets that money from the county. And we do not get school money for that though. So, and they can opt out of that if we were to reopen our DDA to extend any of our lines or anything. They could opt out of that and we could lose that money.
So to reiterate, the DDA is its own entity-
Correct.
-that receives its money from the TIPA, which comes from the business taxes. That the only way we capture that, the, the money is because it just comes to Lathir. And Lathir is just the one that disperses the money. It's nothing that Lathir gets as in to keep, it's to go right to the DDA. And so the only thing that, the, the only entity that's really benefiting from the DDA, and I hope I'm saying this right, is the DDA gives back to the city of Lathir Village, not vice versa.
Well, the city-
And when I'm saying to the employees and to-
Right, but the city has an agreement with the DDA that we do, they do get some of our taxes-
Okay.
-from the city, but it's the business district because that's, because that's the agreement within the TIPA-
Right.
-that was made up, yes.
Yep.
And then they have made this agreement to help offset some of our costs.
Yes.
Okay. And at some point, I'd like to know specifically what the DDA provides. I know you said cleanup. What else did you say?
I would strongly, strongly suggest, that's a part of the MML training. They talk about all the different commissions and committees that can be within a city. And it gives a, it's a wonderful, and you might be able to give it to-
I believe that.
-to break down, just so you have a full understanding of it because it's not easy to learn in one hour.
No, and I'm not asking for one hour. I'm just a, just a synopsis. If I go online, I go into the DDA, I'll see everything they did in the last month.
The DDA is taking care of anything around the building, the flowers outside the building, things like that. They're taking care of the gateways on both sides of the, on the Southfield and 12 Mile and Lincoln and Southfield.
So beautification.
Beautification. They are the ones that decorate, or have paid for the decorations for Christmas time. All the lights that we have around the building and that at Christmas, the DDA has taken care of that and have done that. They are the ones that are supposed to be taking care of the alleyways. So they try to hire summer help for things like that.
Cleaning alleys or maintaining alleys?
Maintaining the brush and things like that, that might be hanging over the fences or over the walls or something like that. They're supposed to kind of do some of that. But mainly, they are anything on Southfield Road, 11 Mile and 12 Mile is what they're-
Keep up with all the businesses.
Yep, keep up with the businesses, try to get businesses in here, try to get businesses to stay, help businesses. That's all DDA. And they work directly with businesses. But they have been picking up a lot more with the city, with our beautification outside. The city used to pay for all of our beautification outside, and the DDA has taken that over now.
And do they do their own fundraising too, or it's all done through TIPA money?
It's all done through TIPA money.
Okay. Thank you.
So are we good with general government?
I am.
Services, okay.
Are you?
Administration, the election, we're going to have two elections this year coming up. So we have the August and the November election. So we're going to have to put some money in that for those. We also have, we got supplies coming in already for our August, so I'm going to have to do another budget amendment on elections because the supplies have to be paid for before July 1st. So just to let you know, that's coming up. Buildings and grounds, I have backed off the COVID expense building. We budgeted last year 10,000. I'm budgeting 2,500, so that's a $7,500 savings. I looked at everybody's COVID accounts and that, and not much money has been spent out of the COVID accounts. So I have backed those down.
I thought we were also getting this money back, the, anything that we were spending for the COVID expenses.
We already got that back.
We've got a lot of it back.
Yeah, we got a little bit back.
All right.
So you're at the bottom of this.
And that, and actually, that's still with the other two, the, with, not just the COVID, but the ARPA funds are where we lost revenue.
Just one second.
Got it.
They're on page six, COVID.
I'm on page six. Down towards the bottom. Did you print the newest one out, Leanne?
That's what I'm wondering. Do I have the wrong one or did she?
I think I did. No, I probably have the one that's all marked up.
Yep. Yeah, probably. You know what? Here. Just don't look at the number on the bottom. I don't get any other notes on that one, but we'll give you a good one. No, you're fine. You're fine. We also have contracting with city of Southfield to do the required sweeping up the city hall and DPW parking lots per MS4 permit. So we have to do that. And we're just going to do our daily sanitizing of the building unless we have a breakout of something, then we'll have to do something there. But, okay. Public safety, the police chief has, has asked for me to put in a full-time lieutenant. He would like to promote a full-time lieutenant in, to, well, you can talk about that if you'd like.
I think it's just part of a continuation of our succession planning. It makes sense to have a lieutenant and, you know, have someone be able to step in and, and handle, you know, my duties if I'm on vacation or what have you. So again, it's just, just something that makes sense for the department to have a lieutenant.
What, what line item are you referring to?
Well, that would be permit salaries.
All right, so are you looking within the department or are you looking outside?
Yes, it would be a promotion. We have two sergeants right now, and they would both be eligible to take the lieutenant's task and be promoted from there.
Okay. So that, that's like, they actually take a test or?
Yes.
Okay. So it has, it has nothing to do with you?
Has no, well, there is a portion, there is, there's an actual plan that has to go through. There's interviews, they have an interview with me, then they have an interview panel, and they take a test.
Okay.
And that's part of the, the whole promotional process.
Okay. Thank you.
And there is a 2% increase in our Southfield Fire and Emergency Dispatch. This is our second year of their contract, so next year we will have to go and renegotiate the contract with Southfield Fire and Dispatch Services. City of Berkeley, we've been pretty, staying pretty steady at that line item. There hasn't been too much activity there, so that's been a good thing. And the other thing that I just wanted to bring to the attention is that our, let's see if I can find it. Our district court fees are down. So they haven't been, those have come down quite a bit. We're not where we used to be. So, and hopefully we can get back up there after, since we're at, beyond COVID now, we can get back up there. The next one is the DPS, the Public Service, Public Service. This here is our leaf collection. It is also our SACRA information, which has to be, those have to come in. Our leaf collection is going to be what it is, but our SACRA, I have to get that information yet. The Lathir Services that does our DPS contract with us, they do not have a contract at this time. They would like to have a 3% increase due to the diesel fuels and things like that. So that is something council's going to have to discuss, and then we're going to have to bring a contract to the council for approval.
It's normally 2%. When, last, last time they stagnant.
I think it was 1%.
They originally asked for 2%.
Yes. And it was 1%, and then it was stagnant, stagnant last year, yes. They did not have a raise at all last year.
Okay.
So, but they did ask for 3%, so, okay. Okay. Recreation, as you can see, we do have a line item for the dog park. We also have a line item for the community garden, concerts in the park. The, this year, the Lathir Community Foundation is paying for all the concerts in the park, and I'm anticipating they'll probably pay for them next year too.
So the concerts in the park, why do we still have a budget line for 2,000? Are they reimbursing us?
No, the 3, the $390,000 is, or I'm sorry, $390 is for our license fee. We have to pay a fee for music here. And that's what the 390 is. So that could come down to 390.
Okay.
But I don't know if, you know, you decide you wanted another concert for something or, you know, if we had a big festival, we had a band or something, you could always take it out of that line item. The other thing I'd like to-
Oh, sorry. And then in this one is where any other community group that wants to have something on the budget would go underneath here?
Either here or general, yeah.
Okay.
Probably, like the historical, that would probably go under general.
That's going in general.
Yeah. This is more what Parks and Rec would do. So anything Parks and Recs are going to do would be under this one.
So, sorry, for the concerts in the park, so is that a one-time fee, but there's multiple concerts? So is that like, it's just a one-time fee?
Yeah, 390 is a one-year, once a year fee.
Once a year fee, okay.
Yep, it's, it's a license that you have to have for any, for, so like if you're, you have a band that plays Elvis music, or you have an interpreter of Elvis, we're paying for that license is what we're paying for. Also, I would like council to look at the community events line item and figure out what they want to do with that, if they're going to have any events this year. I did up it from when Chris was doing our budget. He did cut the recreation budget by quite a bit. He put in 8,500 last year. We have spent 12,000 this year, so I've upped it to 15,000, but we've always had that at like 20,000, 25,000. So I don't know where we want to put that at. So that's a question for council to think about and think about, you know, programs and things like that.
Or for the new Parks and Rec Coordinator to think about.
Right. I was going to say, so Parks and Rec should come to you guys with a, a plan of what they will, they would like to see so that we can adjust that line item accordingly. Then we have the major street fund. We get our Act 51 money from the state. And then we're also putting funds, this is the major road. We're also trying to put some funds away for the 11 Mile project that's going to be coming down in the next couple of years. And the capital improvement of the street fund reflects out of this budget. And we do have the street millage for it, for the projections of the. The next one is the local streets, and that's the same. We get the, we get revenue from the Act 51 revenue that comes in. We have the street projects that are coming out, half of the street projects. And anything we do, like coal patching of our roads, it's a 50-50 split between major and local. Anything we do with tree cutting or trimming trees, we do a 50-50 between major and local roads. We kind of split the cost between the two. And then I need to talk to our engineer to find out exactly what the cost of the streets are going to be for this year so that I can make this budget accordingly to what the projects are. And the water sewer funds, these are last year's rates. Like I said, I just got the rates. So these have not been adjusted at all yet as of yet. So your budget for the water and sewer budgets, those are not going to be correct due to not having rates, and I don't know if the revenue and the expenditures to offset each other, so. And capital improve, capital improvement is the very last page. And on the capital improvement, this is, we have to sit down and look at all the capital improvements that are being, that are needed. I do have two or three capital improvements that I know of as of right now. The police department do need two new cars this year. One of their cars blew an engine and it's non-reparable, and what was the other one?
The other one, just the, the amount of uh repairs that these two older cars are, are taking repair, we, we are well past our budget, so it's time to replace them.
What are you going to do under the car?
That's not on here? Is it on here? Well, it's on, it says cars, if you look under the police department, but this is not all of the, this will not be all of our um, our capital improvements that we will do this year.
It's under vehicles.
Oh, vehicles at the bottom here? Yes, but this is not all the capital improvements that we're gonna do this year, we're gonna have to weed out and see what we're gonna actually do with the money that we have to do it with. So, and then the other one I know is um, the TV department needs a new server, cause their server is, and Jim would know more about this server than I would, but um, I know I brought his information up here.
But you didn't put it in the capital improvements yet?
It was not in the capital improvements.
Okay.
This is something that was just brought to us last week, so um.
I did have, oh, you have it in here for the um, um, well, you have it for the kitchen remodel.
We don't need a kitchen remodel, I don't think.
Okay, we'll be cross that out, what about the uh, the actual community room because?
There has been a lot of talk about that and that's something.
Once there is um, coming away from the stage, when someone almost fell on that one.
Okay.
And so I'm just wondering what that looks like.
I don't think the stairs are hooked to the stage anyways, I don't think they ever were. I don't think they ever were, but I would have to go check that, I know um, people have talked about the curtains in there that they should be replaced and maybe a paint job, a new paint job in there.
Replacement of tiles instead of painting over the watermarks.
And we can do that, so, there's things that, you know, we can put in here, but that's something that council's gonna have to decide too, is what do you want for your capital improvements this year?
Okay.
And so, uh, we did not, we were gonna replace carpet up here, we did not replace the carpet up here this year. Um, I don't know if we will replace it next year, we didn't, you know, it could be rolled over, but as of right now, maybe the community room takes presence over the carpet up here, so.
And then also um about uh, we rewiring downstairs in the community room? Is that something that we should also be considering?
Rewiring for?
I don't know if that equipment, and this is a Jim question, is if that equipment that is there needs upgrading also? And then have the ability to move our meetings downstairs more seamlessly, is there something where we need to do an upgrade in the community room? That's a Jim question, but we're, I'm just waiting for him, see if he's gonna say anything out of the.
Is he gonna come out and say something?
Okay, maybe not.
I don't see, um, but that is uh, that has, no. That's a possibility of different things to upgrade, I do know we need to, we should update, uh, upgrade our wireless system for our internet wireless.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
And I know at one time, um, Ms. Steck was talking about, to somebody about um wireless in the park and that, which we probably cover in the building too. So, and that was broadband, so.
So that's something that the council for our budget, um, our budget meeting that we need to consider, that the um technology upgrade and then the community room upgrade.
Your next budget hearing. And those are things you should think about.
So what we need um estimates for these, or we could just make a.
You can make an amount on it and then if it's over um five thousand dollars before it's, the work is done, there would have, it would have to come to you for approval for the three bits.
Okay.
I don't see it on here, but I know heating and cooling and having your thermostat stuck at a temperature was a problem.
Uh, they fixed that today, actually.
Yay, good, so we can knock that off.
Yep.
Is it working?
Um, they might have to um, they might have to get us a new box, but right now it is working, yes.
Feels good up here.
And they tried to tell me what we, I could do if we lose power, it happens when we lose power and then they can't get us back online. The other thing with the heating and cooling too is um, they were talking to me today that we really should have a contract with them and that will probably be something I will be bringing to council because right now our um filters upstairs and that are not being changed because we don't have anybody doing regular maintenance on our systems. So the, the um Denny's Heating and Cooling is the first people that we use their IVU system, which I have on my computer, so I can adjust the heat and the um air conditioning in the building for the community room, the three floors. And so they have that, um, they, I asked them to give me a quote on what it would be for a yearly maintenance cost, so that we could, um, because the filters really need to be changed and it's probably not good to have them dirty like that up there.
No.
So.
Is it Denny's, D E N N Y S?
Denny's like he told me, the restaurant.
Oh, perfect.
Only it's heating and cooling. And that's my preliminary budget for now, I, you know, there's a lot, I gave you guys a lot of information, council needs to think about some of the information, they need to come together as a council and to discuss it so that I can prepare the final budget for January twentieth meeting.
June.
Or June twentieth, I'm sorry, June, June twentieth.
So did we get any of the proposed possible dates for our budget hearings?
The way Kelda was talking, we had a meeting every Monday for the next two months, except for the two holidays. So, because Mondays seem to work for everybody, so, um, we can.
Well, we better get started.
Yes.
Do you have some dates, Kelda?
Well, most people said Monday was best for them, I do know that, and Suzie did put out a doodle poll because um, one Monday is the um.
Memorial.
No, one Monday is the ethics.
Oh, right.
With the ethics. That's next Monday, so she did put out the doodle so that she could get some other dates in there to um, find out when people could make it.
How, what kind of time do you wanna allocate to each meeting? Like a budget meeting?
Could it be, could we? They go, they can go four hours, whatever.
So, well, I was just gonna say, can we tack it on, start it right after the ethics meeting?
Um, the ethics, they said was gonna be, they said the ethics is gonna be out, probably one meeting itself.
Yep.
Is from what I've heard, so.
I won't be available after the ethics meeting, so I mean, again, Bruce can sit in for me, but it's gonna be a long.
Right.
Budget is long, should be long.
Yeah, cause there's a lot of discussion in it.
Should be.
With the council, yes.
And you always want it on a night, I guess people can't come during the day, or Saturday or weekend or, I mean, I feel like we should be cranking this out, it's kind of important. Count me in any day.
It's up to council, I mean, I pretty much, I mean.
It's a big deal and it's the twentieth.
Well, I've been working on it, I've been working on the budget.
I know, I know, I appreciate it.
I would say um, possibly when, when maybe Suzie comes back, maybe she can take authority on it and just send out some dates instead of um, the doodle poll.
Okay.
So we can just.
Cause she needs to know what dates are available for people though, that's why we do the doodle poll, just to get the, the, just to get the date.
Well, and the last one.
Or just do it.
I mean, it's like a, I, I guess the doodle poll can work, but.
Well, she did it for the ethics to see when the ethics was and then she was gonna pick other gates that people were available to do the other, for budget hearings.
And did she, didn't she do it for the?
Well, she has the ethics in there, so I don't know what the others, cause she's in training this week, um, she will be back on Friday, so but I don't know what um, the other schedule is, I know right now we're trying to set up for the city manager, um, meet and greet and also the city manager um, interviews. And we're looking at June first and second, but we do have a group that comes in here on Wednesdays nights that we're trying to see if we can get, and we can ask them if they can not come in that Wednesday, if we can hold off that Wednesday, they will let us know tomorrow, so.
Or could we go in that room, or do you think that's too small?
Well, depending on how big, how many people show up, that's the thing, you know, you don't know how many people are gonna be here for that, for the meet and greet.
If it's a nice night, we can be outside. Isn't it like till eight?
It's Michigan.
It's from six to eight. But usually we have it with inside and, you know, we have some tables set up and so people, if they wanna sit or, we have the tall tables that they can stand at and they just walk around and meet people and.
How big's the group here that comes Wednesday, could they go in this, this room?
No, it's a, it's a church group, no. They're two, oh yeah, I asked about that and it's quite a big group that comes in on that table.
So will that be every Wednesday?
They are, they are booking a room every Wednesday.
Oh, so we really can't do any Wednesdays then maybe for this?
For the meet and greet? That's why we're trying to get them to move one Wednesday, if they will allow us to do the meet and greet on a Wednesday and not have it that Wednesday. We're trying to work with them as best as we can and we're trying to see if they will work with us. Because that was the best day is June first and second for everybody.
Otherwise, we're into the next week?
Right, and we didn't wanna go into the next week, but it wouldn't matter anyways, cause the next week was a, a um, Wednesday and Thursday also.
Oh.
So you're still running into that Wednesday night, so, but like I said, next, tomorrow morning, the um, they are supposed to call us back and let us know. She was gonna talk to the um, the minister, pastor, or um, she was gonna talk to them and see if they would.
What time do they start, maybe we could, we could do our meet and greet earlier.
They are there from.
Six to nine.
Six to nine.
Oh yeah, that's too early for a meet and greet. And too late.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Oh boy.
Alright. So is there any questions on the budget or anything, or do you want me to continue working on it as best as I can? So we have a budget hearing.
Uh, can you just go over, um, you know what, never mind. We can, I'll talk about it later, it's okay.
So you, there's an increase in the budget in seven hundred and eighty thousand? Is that what you're seeing here?
Yes, well, but that's because it's a estimate.
Correct. So, um, couple of questions. Does the charter mandate that we balance the budget, so we do have to?
We have fun balance.
Okay.
And fun balance would balance the budget.
Okay, and then, um, so there's no room for a deficit when we're putting this budget together, if we end up spending more or how does that work?
It comes out of fun balance.
Oh, there's, oh, there'll be a fun balance?
You have fun balance, yes.
Okay. So you're not nervous about this budget?
I, I just put, I put it together, but like I said, there's gonna be a lot of changes done to it and I know that.
And that's pretty typical.
And that's typical. Normally, I'm not doing, or even, even when managers do it, they're holding budget hearings on this, they're not just, you know, they've taken it upon themselves to put in things and that's what I did, is I took it upon, looking at last year's, what we're spending, what we're doing, where I can cut because we haven't spent the money, like I said, covid, we haven't spent the money in our covid accounts, so I cut those down is, you know, because we're not spending the money there. Um, we have bought the screening, we have bought the, you know, the cleaning supplies and things like that, the gloves, the, we haven't had to use those, so.
So you are good, if we come to it, if that happens again, we don't have to buy more supplies and screening and all that?
Well, you guys say we're screening up here, so you would not have to buy any more of that, the plastic screening and that, we do have our screening for our front counter already. Um, we do have masks still from, you know, previous, we do have sand, hand sanitizer from previous, so there is things there and even if we did, I, I still put two hundred and fifty dollars into the budget, so if we did have it, you know, but there's always, as the auditors have told me, there's always budget amendments, you can always do budget amendments, so it doesn't matter what your budget is, because you can always do budget amendments.
Thank you. And you got the wish list from everybody, that's what's on here for capital improvement?
No, the capital improvement was the wish list that um went to the planning commission, that is the cap, the capital improvement list is from the planning commission. Um, that everybody, that they, they had to send to um, to have it put into the capital improvement plan for the planning commission, but there are some other wish list, wish, this things, like I said, Jim Nelson does need a server in his room, cause his is, I wanna say for his playback thing, um, stuff that he needs that, but his is um, how many years old is it, Jim? Seventeen years old, so, so it's about time he does get one for that, cause I mean, we're gonna have problems if we don't get something there.
So the planning commission, uh, they made the recommendation for the parks as well?
They approved the plan, uh, they approved the capital improvement plan.
Okay.
The park, uh, the, and then it comes to council.
Okay, I'm just curious, it's quite a bit of money.
That was high too, well.
I mean, I, I know it's not like it's gonna necessarily happen, or maybe just hopeful wishing, I just, I just know like Golden Gate was just newly renovated, so.
Yeah, you look at.
I'm curious what they were, what they're looking to do, not necessarily I'm upset with the allocation they're looking for.
Well, could it, I, I'm not sure, but now, now most of the parks are doing away with the wood chips or the pla, uh, the tire chips or the, those chips and they're putting that um, tarp kinda, I don't know what it is.
It's kinda like, almost kinda done.
Yeah, it's kinda bouncy.
Okay.
They're putting that under the equipment and things like that, so maybe they're looking at that and I know I see on the capital improvement that they do have grants by some of the parks, so.
Okay.
That they would be looking into grants.
Well, I'm wondering if we turn our little triangles into parks, if we could tuck this into that line item. Isn't that the goal, maybe to turn these into little parks?
Well, if the residents near those want those little parks, some of them don't want little parks near them, so I don't know. They like to have them cleaned up, but they would like to have that space, that nothing's there, so.
So a lot of them seem like almost privacy for a lot of people, so.
Yeah, the trains.
Doesn't necessarily. So, uh, so when we discuss the legal services increase, uh, so do you plan on just doing all the, the increases together in one budget hearing? Or like, how does that work, like do we?
Well, if, if there were any increases in anything, they would have, the contracts would have to come to council for approval of the contracts. So, um, I know um, since our attorney has been with the city, I don't think he's had an increase at all. Um, I did put a two percent in there into that line item, now, I have not talked to him about that, but I don't know, you know, he might say stay the same, he might say, yep, you know, he might say one percent, I don't know. But I'm just anticipating, because with the, um, with the cost of living now and things like that, that are up there, these companies are gonna wanna go, and maybe Leanne can tell me more. If, I put a two percent in for the attorney, for an increase, I have not talked to Scott about that yet.
Yeah.
So, but that's something that he's gonna have to talk to me about and we're gonna have to do his contract if that's the case.
Correct.
Because I know he's, you know, with the cost of living and he has not had an increase since he has been with us and that has been how many years? So.
Okay, I'm just more so curious about the process of, so when we bring the contract, so are we approving the contract first and then, so?
You can approve the budget and then you can approve the contract, either way, and if, if it all works out that the contracts come to the council the same time that the budget's coming, that works out great too. You would approve, you know, you can approve the contracts and the budget all in the same meeting.
Right, cause technically it doesn't matter, cause you can just amend it, the new amount, correct? I mean, not to.
I can do budget amendments.
Add more work to you, but.
No, I, I have to do budget amendments at least twice a year, so.
Right, okay.
And you will probably have, um, depending, we might have to have another meeting in the end of June for budget amendments at that time because I don't know if I will be able to get the budget done and the budget amendments all done for the same meeting in June twentieth. And of course, after that, because you look at our, what we're, you know, June fifteenth is our next check run, but then you've got a whole nother month because July, all the bills for July go back to June year, fiscal year, so you have a, you know, you have another month you have to think about.
Okay.
So you have a month and a half of bills still coming in at that time, so it's easier if we have a meeting towards the end of June where I have a clearer of what I can say, you know, this is how many more bills we're gonna have for this and to do the budget amendments, to make the budget as good as, you know, make it so it's not line items aren't over and things like that.
Right, okay.
Is there anything else?
Big deficit district court fines, so we really were collecting quite a bit there, weren't we?
Yes, we were.
Do we know if district court's open again yet?
Yeah.
It just, yeah, recently.
They're closed, we've been, they've been open through, well, they were closed down for a while, yeah, and then they were open just Zoom only and now they're gradually moving, they're still doing a lot of stuff by Zoom, but they're getting criminal stuff in person, so. We're picking up, I know our office is picking up. We're picking up, I know our office is picking up a bit more, but...
So basically, we just need to get those budget hearings scheduled. When is, so would you would like to see all the budget hearings done, what, like in June? Or...
Before May thirty first. Um, well, you have to give me time to put the budget together with the wording and all the charts that have to go in with the budget, things like that. There's quite a bit to, you know, in putting the budget together, once you get all the information, so...
All right, well...
So I will be talking to Suzie, and we will be getting, you know, dates that we need to have.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're staying above board and doing what we need to do.
What would you suggest, Dan, for the new members of, as far as like what you've proposed, and to, for them to prepare themselves? Do you have any idea what the best way to make a most efficient budget, you know, hearing, meeting for them, like should they...
They should go through line item by line item, they should look at what we've budgeted before, what we're budgeting now, um, see if there's anything, and when we do, you know, if they have any comments, I can tell them what we're taking out of those accounts, why we need that money in that account. Um, they need to really look at capital improvements to see what actually needs to be this year in our capital improvements. I mean, the list, the wish list is always a wish list, but there are certain, certain things that really need to be in there. Um, I know the DPS has been wishing for a backhoe, their backhoe is very bad, and so the DPS has been wishing for that. Um, there's other things that they have to look at, um... But I would go line by, line item by line item, and look at everything on those line items. And then, um, the, and you will have, when I get the water rates done, you'll have the water rates to talk about, you're going to have the sewer rates to talk about, those are going to be things that will need to be talked about too, so...
Start making your detailed notes.
Yep. And I will have my notes too, because I...
And we're making our detailed notes off of this, this draft that you proposed, okay?
Yeah.
And it'll be also, uh, a time for the groups to get their wish list in, too.
If there is groups that have wish lists, yes.
I mean, I just think that it should be extended to all, if, you know, one gets it, then they should all have these shared opportunity.
So how do we notify those groups? Because, I mean, we can't assume that they watched tonight's council meeting.
You can post it on, um...
We can just post it on Facebook, okay?
On the website, and hopefully someone will... Someone will tell our group chairs that this is what they, you know, they have opportunity to...
Will give Jalen a list of the groups, and he can go door to door?
How many more are left? There aren't that many more left, they've got planning and DDA, no, DDA gets something else. Yeah, there's not that many, are there?
Yeah.
Maybe they each just get X amount, we just put yours budgeted in, if they ask for it, at least it's there. If they don't, it's surplus. If we know who the groups are. Yeah, because, I mean, because the Parks and Rec, um, Commission, they have to, you know, decide what they're going to do, what kind of activities are going to happen, things like that, so that's one. And that's the recreation budget right there.
Well, you see, Loretta's here, I'm sure she has some good ideas.
Anything, any other questions regarding the budget? Okay, is any questions for item sets on the agenda?
This is the time I could ask?
Not yet.
I don't have any questions, I'm pretty sure I do, but I don't right now.
I mean, you have the opportunity during the actual meeting, but if you have any questions. Councilwoman Cunnes, do you have anything that you would like to, any questions regarding anything on the agenda?
Not yet, I'll wait.
Oh, I will ask this, so since we're going over the, uh, the new code for the electrical vehicles, will you guys be able to answer those questions, or should we wait for Suzie?
That's actually something that the planning commission put together, so you're going to want to wait for Suzie to give you the answers on that one.
Okay, so...
It's not anything, I missed something, it's not something we have to adopt tonight.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's considered adoption, so I mean...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so...
That's just doing the amendments, that's doing the ordinance amendments, and I think Leanne can answer the questions for, I could be wrong.
The consideration of the adap, adoption of the electrical vehicles?
Yeah.
Can you answer that?
Yeah.
Okay. Leanne will answer that.
Okay. That's my only question.
Anything else? Mayor and council comments. Um, I saw that there were some questions about the no mow May, and whether or not there's a budget for that, and there's not. I mean, that, the incentive is for residents to choose to cut the grass or not. So if you don't mow your lawn and dandelions come, then it attracts pollinators and bees and things like that. So that's the incentive for, uh, residents. And it was, we had overabundance of residents that made the resolution before we're making the resolution, uh, so to speak, that they were not cutting their grass, because they were honoring no mow May. And it was quite a few people that was doing that, and so, um, instead of everyone getting a citation from, um, the, um...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, I asked that we just make a resolution for May, it's fourteen, fifteen more days, and then we'll go back to normal mowing.
Yes, because that's what other cities are doing too.
Royal.
And I think there's a couple other residents there, yeah.
Okay.
I think it's fine if you have a dinky little lawn, but some of our people have pretty big lawns. It's going to be really hard to cut through if you aren't mowing it in May.
Mine's not hard, I have a half acre, and I haven't mowed it, and it's not, it's bad, but it's not...
Yeah, but you've got two more weeks and more rain.
Well, I think it's more so a consideration.
It's for the, for nature, and, um...
If you want to, you can, but if you don't...
If you mow your lawn, the dandelions and the clover come back up anyway. We did, and it came back up.
So it's a choice of the residents, if you want to, um, I mean, if we accept the, uh, the resolution, but it is a way to, um, increase our, uh, pollinators, and to respect our mother earth and bringing our insects back. That kind of goes into the mayor's monarch pledge, it was sent to me and asked by the National Federation, National Wildlife Federation, uh, about the monarch pledge. Um, and there was another question about what's the best budget for that? I think we do planning, which comes out the DDA, and so it'll be from the DDA, the choices of the flowers that they get that could be attractive to, um, monarchs, bees, butterflies. So again, that would come out, the DDA, uh, budget, which is already there, because they get the, they already have a line item to get flowers, right?
And also, Mayor, that, uh, we have had a lot of calls from residents in the city asking about the no mow May, so...
I received your many emails and phone calls about it also, so I get what you're saying.
Well, why aren't we just providing them with the true plants that bees like? I mean, I don't think clover and dandelion is necessarily a bee favorite, and all our flowers are in bloom right now. Why, why don't we encourage people to plant the flowers?
That's why the second one, mayor's monarch pledge, is the one to, um, plant flowers for the bees and for the monarchs.
Well, I, I say we group it together, and we mow our lawns in May.
So there's two separate things, because one's a resolution for the no May, and the other one came from the National Federation of Wildlife.
Okay, so it's only monarchs, it's not bees, you're just...
It's supposed to be monarchs and pollinators, but I'm just reading what's on the, um, agenda. But you can also not vote for the resolution, so...
That's true, because I haven't been getting the calls Pam's been getting. Also, I did see the proclamation for gun violence awareness day.
Oh, I guess, can I finish my part?
Oh, what was your part? Sorry.
I mean, just go ahead, you go ahead.
Nope, I'm done.
No, go ahead about the gun violence.
No, I was just going to say...
Actually, though, aren't these, these are for the regular meeting?
Well, they are.
Yeah, this is things that are on the agenda that, it's just, you know, asking questions, but I can hold mine until the next...
And I can hold mine, I just had one more, if we could add the National Gun Safe Day is the fourth, why wouldn't we do both?
Do both of what?
For the gun violence awareness, but also the gun safe awareness. Because there are a lot of, June fourth is Gun Safe Awareness Day. I mean, if you're doing one...
I wasn't reckon, I did not know it was gun safe on the fourth, where did you see that at?
That's on National List of Gun Safe and Gun Awareness, it's, they come together on the third and the fourth.
So, um, the Gun Violence Awareness Day is from an actual group that we've been doing this with, um, I would say last, what, at least five years? I think it's five years, and they send this to us every year, I wasn't aware of doing a proclamation first day for the, I'm saying for later. I haven't seen a proclamation sent to us to ask us to, to get that day for the fourth.
And I guess that was my other question, how do we come up with proclerate, proclamations and considerations?
Because they send it to us and ask us to, um, accept these resolutions and proclamations. They actually send it to me and to, um, city administration and ask us to...
So all these groups?
Mental health awareness and things like that.
All these groups have sent something to us to ask us to accept these.
Oh.
So it's not the council coming up with, or anyone on the council?
Well, that's what I was wondering, where do you even come up with these? They're such, yeah, I mean, because I've heard of the Gun Safe Awareness Day, but I hadn't heard of the Gun Violence Awareness Day, so I just was curious.
I mean, if you have, on that, nope, if you have something that you're, you're passionate about, or you can request your group to, to, you know...
I think they just go hand in hand.
Always, so...
It's two separate groups though, so you would have to call the groups to have them say, let's go hand in hand. It's not up to us to accept them hand in hand, it's a separate group.
Oh, so every, so this isn't something we do continuously, every year it comes again? Because you said we've already acknowledged these.
Every year, we do the June, the June third Gun Violence Awareness. They contact me repeatedly throughout the summer before it comes and ask us to accept this proclamation. Because it's based, it, it's a whole reason behind it, it's based off of a young girl, and so they call, or they email and ask you to accept those days. Now, the gun safety, I've not received anything from them, but if you would like to reach out to that group to see if there's something that we can accept as a proclamation, then I'm sure that we all would like that.
I don't know, I've just seen it, you haven't seen anything about it?
No, ma'am.
I don't think I'm making it up.
No, but they would normally choose to request different municipalities, or, you know, to, to do that, so they would reach out to...
And how do they pick the municipalities to reach out to?
You'd have to ask the group.
Oh, and, oh, but we don't...
So it's not us going out, it's not the council or the city saying, hey, can we do a proclamation? It's, it's the group saying, we would like to get awareness to our cause, and we're going to reach out to not just Lathair, but to numerous...
Communities, okay.
Communities, and if they do it one year, they normally would want to keep that awareness going, so then they... But again, like Kelly said, it's not a repeat, automatic Lathair does it, it's that group needs to, to say, hey, we want you to do it again this year.
And then do they send a link, or how do residents find out what they're about? I mean, I see the proclamation...
Well, just by making the proclamation, hopefully the people that are paying attention to city council activities will hear this and, and, yeah.
But we would have a way, if they wanted to get involved, for them to...
Well, they would, I think, do just know the pro, yeah, oh, there's a proclamation by the group.
Mentioned in the proclamation, okay.
Yeah, and Suzie, she usually, uh, provides a list of websites that the, the group promotes, uh, for like Mental Health Awareness Month.
Oh, I did see that, yes, I did.
So that's usually how it should work, so residents can...
Reach out.
Get involved and figure out what's going on.
Do you have anything else, if you have a question about, or are you looking at something else?
Oh, no, I'm looking for the proclamations, I know I saw them, I'm just looking for them.
They'll be in the regular meeting packet.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, I don't... I'll find them.
It's on page, um, I just, uh... Page one thirty-four is one of them, one thirty-three is the, uh...
Oh, they're toward the back, I got it, thank you.
Do you have anything?
No.
Loretta, now's the time for any public comments.
You have to come over here.
You have to come over here.
Yes, ma'am. Well, this is time for public comments, speakers are limited to three minutes.
I have a sit right here?
Yes, ma'am.
You can give your mask on if you want.
Yes, it's okay, you've got to talk into the mic.
I just have a question. Well, I have a question about the Historical Society, and you said that, um, the budget item for their members, to pay for their membership and also their training, is that correct?
Yes.
Why would we pay for their membership?
That's what they're requesting, and I'm sorry, we're not supposed to be going back and forth, but that's what they're requesting. It's okay, it, it's, um...
Well, I'll just say, I just, I don't understand that we would pay for anybody's membership. I go along with the training, but if you want to be part of an organization, and there's a fee, then I think you should pay that membership fee, and then if, training could be provided by whoever.
I understand, go ahead.
I think what they're asking is for the national membership, or the Michigan membership, the, you know, to be a member, or for the city of Lathair Village to be a member.
Not individuals.
The Lathair Village should pay for the, the club's membership, not individual membership.
Right.
Well, I might go along with that.
Yes, they're talking, that's what they're asking, is that the city of Lathair Village become a member of the Historical Society, or Historical District Commission for the state of Michigan.
Oh, ah, well, that's, that's a difference. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that has any comments?
Okay.
Any comments, you have, uh, three minutes to speak.
Are you going again?
I have one other thing that I'm here for. I'd like to know if there's a possibility for us to have a community garage sale like we did before. I know we have them now, and everybody has their, in their own individual driveways. But I'd like to see us come together as a community and have garage sales, because I think it will bring a lot of camaraderie back, and the, you know, the, the residents can get together and have a nice day and make some money on the side.
Well, we have been doing community garage sales to, for the whole city, at their individual houses and that.
Right.
Where we supply two signs to, and we have been talking about doing that this year.
Okay, and I don't know if this would, we can, we could do it all, probably, but I would like to see one where they come to the city hall.
City Hall?
Where all together, not spread out.
Yeah, that might be a little difficult with us booking the community rooms so much, because I think we're pretty booked on our, our weekends.
Well, it'd be outdoors.
Yeah, but they need, the parking lot is involved.
You take the parking lot spaces.
Yeah.
And if we have groups coming in for, then they would need the parking lot spaces, so... I might be able to get one in December for you, maybe, outside.
No, this would be, that wouldn't work.
No?
Okay, well, I was asked to bring it up, and so I did.
Now, the community garage sale where you have it at your individual house, I think that that's a great idea, and I think that that's something that we should bring back. I think we did it normally at the end of June, and I know that the Parks and Rec, um, coordinator usually coordinated that. That's something that I think that, that's, you know, it's not a heavy lift. And actually, the Parks and Rec Department or the committee could actually do something like that.
And we've, and we were, I was, I was actually talking, or talking to, um, Jaclyn, our front counterperson about it, and, um, you know, finding out we have enough signs for the two signs per person, and also, we're trying to pick a Saturday for, or a weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday to have it, so...
I do remember having it in the parking lot.
Well, they were wonderful.
The Lions Club used to do that.
Yeah.
But it was, and it wasn't, it was well attended, and it was really very wonderful, and people loved it. But it was, and it wasn't, it was well attended, and it was really very wonderful, and people loved it. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Please come up to the microphone.
Apologize, apologies, I didn't know that what we came to make a comment about would be better for the regular meeting or this planning meeting.
It's totally up to you, you can say it here and you can say it at the meeting if you choose to.
Oh, they're both taped. Sorry, didn't want to take up too much time. Um, hello, and, um, thanks for allowing us to speak, my name is Brittany Hollis, this is my husband, Chris. Uh, we have been residents of Lathir Village for seven years now, um, and we currently live on Eldorado Place. And we were just coming in, um, I know that we've made some outreach to the front desk sometime last year and so on. We're just, we're unclear of understanding, um, what we voted for, essentially, understanding that, you know, our road, we thought was pretty in bad condition and labeled as one A, so we thought that would be highest priority. Um, at least in the project itself, however, I'm not, um, it doesn't seem as if it's going to be done at all, so I was just hoping, and I know this is comments, so you guys probably can't answer questions. But because I, I found you know a veil through the front desk and, um, even through email. Um, I know, uh, Bruce did respond and say that he was out of town, but again, we, we just can't get an answer, and we're just uncertain now that we're about to enter next year into the third year of the project. Um, just understanding, is Eldorado, you know, north of six ninety-six, cause there is Eldorado that is getting paved. Um, if it was gonna get paved, um, it's a pretty terrible road, I don't know if you guys have rode down it. Um, to be able to, um, it's not maintained regularly either, we always have to do the See Click It app. Um, or we have to call, but our calls aren't returned, so then we have to make it a point to come up here. And we both work, so it's hard to get here between, um, the times, and then they're gone during our lunch hour, where we could try to go in and get it updated, so. Um, we've surveyed a few, not surveyed really, but we kinda talked to some of our neighbors on the road, cause someone had told us before, people on your road don't want it paved, that's why we're not paving it. And I've talked to, they're, from our block, I think there's about twelve or thirteen houses, we talked to about eight people, and we don't. Yeah, so we're, we're just uncertain, now, we, we're willing to do, you know, signatures or whatever it may be. But we're just kinda hoping that if there's money in the budget for, you know, or hell, maybe it is gonna be done, and I just don't know about it yet. But we're just trying to get an answer, that's all.
I got you, um, and I apologize for that, because, um, Bruce said that he was returning, he was emailing you back today. And so I'm assuming that that did not happen, but he did say that he was, uh, in the email, he said he did, was going to. And then also, I know that Suzie also said that she was gonna, um, respond to you, but, um, I will get you the information for you by this evening. Make sure that I have your phone number, I think it's in the email, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I'll call you.
All right, thank you.
And I would just like to add, I know that maybe some surveys have been done, but several of our neighbors, actually, when we have to head north or south, or just north on the street period, we actually go over to the next paved block because, you know, we actually go over to Golden Gate because the road is, uh, just full of potholes. And it's a very horrible ride down the street, so, uh, like I said, we're willing to get signatures, we're willing to canvass our neighborhood to talk to people and everything to kinda show, like, hey, our street would, you know, potentially need some extra care, you know?
Well, thank you for, um, coming for sure, and, uh, I will get the answer, I, off the top of my head, I can't remember Eldorado. I'm like, are you looking at it right now, or are you looking at something else?
No, I was.
Oh, sorry.
No, actually, I was looking at it from the Scott.
It's not that I don't know where that, I just don't know where it's at on the list.
I know Bruce has a more comprehensive understanding of, like, I don't wanna speak right now, but like, about Eldorado, so.
And I took, and, and on the way here, I just took a small video of you, if anyone wants to see it, just to.
Yeah, I actually walked down your street, uh, the other day, um, so I, I kinda, I know what you're talking about.
You know it's raggedy, right?
I mean, I know what streets you're talking about, I just, I, what I was saying was that I don't know about the actual, uh, which streets are.
Make the project or not.
And I don't wanna, I misspeak without looking up, and I didn't bring my laptop.
Okay, thank you.
There is, there is a list of the projects that are taking place, I can forward that to you, a map of all the things?
So I did, we did, um, go online, so I did see, like, what all is there, we're not, obviously. Um, I assume that's for the year, apparently, um, like I said, Eldorado, uh, south of six ninety-six, a, a block of it is getting paved, however, um, from where we are to the end, where it meets past Cambridge and so on, like, um, you know, toward the back of Panera area, it's, it's not, um, getting done. And I know, at least talking in our other neighbors, um, they were just saying, oh, no, we're not getting it done, cause it was told it's too expensive. And I was like, I don't, I don't know, so we're just trying to get answers, and it seems like, you know, all this work was done prior to the election. And I felt like everybody was being really transparent and open about the information, and we felt confident on voting yes. Cause the one prior to, I think it was twenty nineteen, we voted no, cause we're like, we're already paying, our, our taxes are crazy. But, so we, but this one we felt good about, cause our, our street was literally labeled that way. And now it's getting there, and it just doesn't seem like it's getting done, and so it's just disheartening to pay this amount. And we know, cause obviously Meadowbrook got done, and we're not saying we don't want Meadowbrook either, cause we go that way as well. It's just, we're just asking for a proper road, especially when the city can't keep up with the maintenance. So it's literally, we can't drive, we have to go around it just to get, you know, where we need to go, we can't drive on our street. Um, and I know there was like a little stop sign there before, so I thought like, oh, they're getting, you know, some traffic or something. And, but I don't know if it was maybe just not enough, but really, we don't go that way, cause it's so bad, but I'm not sure.
But at the very least, we need to maintain your road, at the very least, and that's something we will put as a top priority, I believe. We have to maintain our dirt roads, that we left dirt roads, they have to be properly maintained, I don't remember them ever looking so bad, I do agree with you.
Yeah, and the dirt kick up is awful, like.
I feel like we used to put tar down or something, I don't know the process, way back in the day, and I don't remember it kicking up like it does now. Cause we live a street away from one, and yes, it's dusty.
Yeah, can't even have our front doors at front level.
I, I hear you, absolutely.
Thank you, guys, great time.
Thank you.
Does the city maintain the dirt roads, we're responsible for those?
Yes, we do.
That would be Sunday Brothers, or who does that?
Lathir Services or DPS, they do go out and grade them.
Do they do the tar still?
No, they would put stone, usually they get stone in here, and.
Well, they do oil too.
Or oil, maybe that's what I'm thinking. The oil for the dust, but they only do that a couple of times a year, they don't do it all the time, but then we do grade the roads. And a lot of times when we have real bad potholes, we'll have, um, stone put in.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
And when will that happen?
Um, I think I gave, um, our DPS foreman, I think I gave him the okay to get the stone. But it's been so rainy and wet that they're having a hard time keeping up with the dirt roads to even grade them, so.
Okay.
I can check tomorrow and ask him about it.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, hearing none, I adjourn, the study session will be back in one minute.